Make sure to explore our website to find more features that will make your day easier and keep you informed. Visit www.cctexas.com.
He serves up a great meal, but he always leaves a mess. His name is Pepperoni Pacino, also known as the Pizza Box, and he's another least wanted offender in the recycling bins dirty dozen. Pepperoni Pacino's grease spots and food particles can contaminate other good recyclables. That's why he belongs.
Testing.
Hello? I'll talk about. There's an opportunity for public comment on just general public comment. Was there anyone wishing to speak on? Any general public comment? All right, there being none, we will close that. And can I get approval of absences?
I make a motion that we approve the absences as presented.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on, we need the approval of minutes from the February 9th meeting. If we approve the minutes as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? What we'd like to do tonight is modify the agenda just a little bit. Item number, letter C, under the Unified Development Code text amendment. What I'd like to do is move forward on the consent agenda. But if you have any specific questions on any of those items, if we could pull those items from the consent agenda. I want to try and do the consent agenda first. Councilman Hernandez is here, and he's double booked, and so if possible, we'd like to try and address that issue. So what I'd like to do is move forward with the consent public hearing, but if you've got any anticipated questions, we can pull those. But Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Andrew Demus with Development Services to read in tonight's consent agenda. Beginning under header A, Plats, item number two, Graham Office Park, Block 1, Lot 1, a final of 4.015 acres. Item number three, Coastal Bend Food Bank, Block 1, Lot 1, a final of 14.383 acres. Item number four, Palms at Blucher Park, Subdivision 1, a replat of 1.162 acres. Item number five, Palms at Blucher Park, Subdivision number 2, a replat of 2.86 acres. Item number six, Royal Oak Unit 3, a final plat of 55.24 acres. And item number seven, which is a conditional plat for Pineda Park, Block 12, lots 15A, 15B, 16A, 16B, 17A, 17B, 18A, 18B, 19A, and 19B. A final replat of .964 acres. Staff and the technical review committee have reviewed the plats and determined that they meet both the conditions of the Unified Development Code and Texas Local Government Code. Staff recommends approval. Under item number eight, time extension, this is the third request for Lake Padre Village PUD, final of .867 acres. And under Plats with a variance, we have items number nine and 10. Those are sister items, both for Highway Park, Block A, Lot 2R, which is a plat of .035 acres. Staff recommends approval of the sidewalk waiver. And the one zoning case on consent is item number 11, Public Hearing 0222-04. Exclusive Housing LLC, at or near 1333 Logan Avenue. The request is from the RS6 Single Family District to the RSTF2 Family District. Staff recommends approval. And if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to address them.
I have a question.
Sir Rooney?
I have a question, number eight, regarding the time extension. Have you had the chance to speak with the applicant? This is their third extension. I know under letter they mentioned regarding to COVID, but has there any progress been moved toward?
They're actually under construction. I drive by that one.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
He beat me to it.
He beat you to it. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I had a question about item number 11. I reviewed the presentation in, so obviously somebody's purchased a home, and it's got a secondary dwelling unit that was scabbed on the side sometimes. So I assume that wasn't a permitted addition?
Correct. The first step to bring it into conformity would be to fix the zoning, and then, of course, any permits that need to be pulled, inspections, and what have you would follow. But first things first is to set the table to correct the zoning district.
Okay. So that was, I guess, part of my question. So once you've discovered it, and it sounds like the applicant is looking to make right on everything, and you go in there and you find whatever was put up, and it's non-conforming, what happens then?
It would be analyzed essentially item by item, so you could have some small code violations that can be corrected with, you know, drywall, paint, siding, all sorts of things. It just depends on the degree of severity. Of course, our goal is to bring people into conformity and not necessarily to find every way to stop the progress. As you mentioned, we could not date when exactly the addition was made, so when the second dwelling was operating. Just based on aerials, that extra piece looks like to have been there since the 70s. So it's probably been operating for quite a while, and with the new owner now purchasing the property, just as you had mentioned, he's doing the right thing. He's coming in trying to correct sins of past owners. So that's why we as staff are supporting him in his endeavor to make corrections on the property and, of course, to bring it into compliance.
And people that are renting their backhouses and stuff like that, you know, what are the legalities of that?
Sure. Accessory dwelling units are typically allowed by code so long as the accessory dwelling unit is below 500 square feet in size. It follows the same rules as if you're renting your home. It's typically 30-day duration minimum of rental, and the owner must live in either the ADU or in the primary home.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I open this for public hearing? Open the public hearing for consent. Consent to items.
What items?
Letter A, numbers 2 through?
11.
2 through 11.
Commissioner Gonzalez, I'll make a motion that we approve items 2 through 11 as presented by staff.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Moving on to item number 12.
Good evening. Dr. Dante Gonzalez, interim director Parks and Recreation, and we're just waiting on Dr. Young. We're just going to go ahead and get started. The presentation up? All right, so brought to you forward today is some updates that we have been working on for quite some time now. I believe we've been working on this Community Enrichment Fund and trying to understand and traverse through the different obstacles that have been brought forth. I believe we've been at it since April of 2021, so it's been long in the making. So the Unified Development Code, it reads that the purpose of the public open space is to provide recreational areas in the form of public parks as function of the subdivision of land for residential uses and the site development of the city. Open space via land dedication or fees is established in the Unified Development Code, and in order to ensure that the land is planned for the start of the development stage, it also ensures that the park development is linked with the plating and the plan review process. So currently, there are two methods that the city uses to gain open space as a result of new development. One of them is through land dedications versus a fee in lieu of land, and the second is the park development fee, park development process improvement. The land dedications versus a fee in lieu of land in section 8.35, land dedication. Whenever a final plat is filled of record within the city's jurisdiction for the development of the residential subdivision, such plat shall contain a dedication of an area of land within the subdivision to the city for city park purposes. For the subdivision where all the lots are single-hand family-use housing types, the dedication requirement shall be determined by the ratio of 1 acre per 100 proposed dwelling units. That means that for every 100 units that are being proposed, 1 acre of land is being dedicated. The second fee that is charged is the fee in lieu of land, in which the city may require a fee in lieu of land dedication. This is calculated through a formula, and the formula is based off the amount of land that is required for dedication times the fair market value per acre of the property being subdivided, and that would equal the number of dollars that are being paid in lieu of land dedication. So this formula basically signifies how much land is to be donated times the value of the land that is currently, the price of that land, and that will give us the amount of money that is dedicated, which is the fee in lieu of land. Open space is a second, so the purpose of the public open space is to provide recreational areas in the form of public parks as a function of the subdivision of land for residential uses and site development within the city. So currently, there are two steps that the developer must follow for the city to gain, use this to gain open space as a result of the new development, and this is the park development fee. So the second form is that for every, oh, my apologies, this is just a breakdown specifically on how that equation is broken down. So the fee in lieu of land, these are the two forms. It's through the plat, so for every 100 dwelling units, 1 acre of land is being donated. And then for every 100, for every price of the land, which the max that we can charge is 62,500, we would calculate the amount of money that is donated or being paid to the city.
Thank you, and I'm Neiman Young, Assistant City Manager for the City Corpus Christi, and thank Dr. Dante for giving us a review of the UDC and where we currently stand today. So after going through the old legacy policy, city council had tasked city staff with reviewing that policy that was based off concerns that were conveyed to city council by not only the general public, but more specifically the development community, who is a major contributor to the Community Enrichment Fund. So in response to city council's request, we put together a working group to review the Community Enrichment Fund. That working group included members from the Planning Department, Parks and Recreation Department, Budget and Finance Office, the City Manager's Office, and DSD. And when we reviewed the process, we found that there were some significant challenges in that process. We found that there were too many line items, which made it exceptionally difficult to track revenue expenditures. That's because each time a new development came into the community and a fee was paid in accordance with that development, a unique line item that had no standard naming system was placed in the Community Enrichment Fund to try to make a unique identifier for that development, which sounded like a good idea for trying to keep up with development across the community. However, as growth expanded in the community and as developments grew, you saw that budget line items in the Community Enrichment Fund grow from 1 to, at last count, over 165 line items in the Community Enrichment Fund. That led to a very great difficulty in trying to identify expenditures coming into the Community Enrichment Fund versus, I'm sorry, revenue coming into the Community Enrichment Fund versus expenditures that are going out of the Community Enrichment Fund. And that's where we find ourselves today, where we have an audit take place, trying to unravel a big yarn of convoluted data, trying to figure out exactly what monies were leveraged against the fund, from whom, and where was those money spent. In addition to those ballooning budget line items, we felt that, we found and discovered that at some point, probably five, six years ago, they had stopped creating new line items in the budget for the Community Enrichment Fund. So you saw new development increasing and growing, and instead of creating a budget line item to account for that funding or fees that were paid, they were intermingled with old legacy budget line items in the Community Enrichment Fund. So a development that was built in 2021 was applied against the budget line item that was created in 2007. So as you can imagine, that's created a financing nightmare that we're trying to untie with the Auditor's Office and the Parks and Recreation Department. We're trying to get out of that business and create a better process so we can move our open space requirements and Community Enrichment Fund process forward. In addition to those challenges that were identified by the internal staff, we did sit down with the development community to feel what their biggest concerns were. And they feel that this formula-based calculation, and then a dual fee where you have the park development fee, and you have the FLO that's based off a formula, creates a lot of confusion. It's led to misinterpretation amongst the city staff and the development community, and miscommunication. And they asked, and we agree, that we should just simplify this process so we're all operating on the same page. So how do we simplify the process? What we recommend is that we do away with this five-mile zone requirement and the unique budget line item requirements. We feel that the spirit of the five-mile radius requirement is to ensure that the contributing development to the fees actually recoups the benefits of the funding that was paid in the Community Enrichment Fund by receiving recreational space that the residents of that development is most likely to use. So we did our measurements on Google Map and on our GIS system, and we had discovered that we have an established almost five-mile or some type of subdivision across the city that makes sense, that's recognized by the development community, recognized by the planning commission, and is recognized by city council, and that's the area of development zones. We recommend that we do away with the five-mile radius requirement that's captured in the UDC and put in its place a requirement that any funds that's paid into the community fund has to be spent within the area development zone of that contributing development. That way, we no longer have 165 budget line items or 300 budget line items, whereas simply nine budget line items that we can count what's coming in and we can count what's going out, and that's going to make the accounting process easier for the finance office and the budgeting office. And more importantly, it makes it more transparent when asked by city council or development community or general public on tracking of those expenditures and those revenues. In addition, our second recommendation is we do away with a two-fee system. Instead of having a two-fee system, the park development fee and the FLO, let's just have one flat fee. And to make it even more simpler, let's make that flat fee not based off of a formula, rather, let's base it off of per dwelling unit. So any developer upfront knows exactly and has an expectation, there's no more surprises. Hey, if I'm going to build this many houses in a project, this is how much I can expect to pay towards open space requirements. And I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Dante so he can just walk you all through how that financially impacts the Community Enrichment Fund.
Thank you, Derek Young. So with this proposal to simplify the community enrichment fees, what we've done is we've negotiated with the development community to a flat fee of $462.50. The breakdown of that particular system, and I will introduce two different systems, which is the current system we currently have, and then the proposal, which is just the one fee. In the current system, in a 100-acre development, if we were to build six houses per acre, the total community enrichment funds that we would receive based on a $25,000 acre price would be $270,000. So it would be $150,000 for the fee in lieu of land, as well as $120,000 for the park development fee. So what we've done is we've taken that $462 as one fee, and we've calculated how much it would take for us to get some equitable amount of monies into the system, just as we would have received with the current system. What that allowed us to do is that we just, so we take 600 houses or 600 dwelling units, we multiply that to $462. That gives you, with the current system, we would get roughly about $270,000. With the proposal, we get $277,000. If we were to look at a 100 dwelling unit example, then we would collect on the current system, we would collect $675,000. With the proposed, we would collect $693,000, which would be about $18,000.
So in addition to simplifying the area development zones versus a five-mile restriction requirement in the UDC, in addition, including a flat fee versus a two-tiered fee system, we're also recommending changes to allow for more transparency in the Community Enrichment Fund process. This includes establishing an annual Community Enrichment Fund budget that would be crafted and delivered along with the city's operating budget and its capital budget. The reason that we're suggesting this is twofold. Number one, in addition to allow for transparency with the general public, also, just like the operating budget and the capital budget, allows for input from the general public to include the development community on what that budget is going to look like before it's adopted by city council. So once again, it's just one more attempt to be more transparent and making sure that Corpus Christi as a community is acting on the same sheet of music when it comes to open space funds. We do have a proposed fiscal year '22 budget, which is in the workings. We received some feedback from city council on what they would like to see that look like, so we're going to be making revisions to that budget and taking that back to council on March 22nd. And as you all are fully aware, this is, we've been before the commission a couple of times and city council a couple of times, and we sat down with the development community over 11 times regarding the Community Enrichment Fund. And through all those different engagements, there's have been requests for information that we've gathered and collected, and we'll quickly run you through those RFIs because I believe that we did during the last planning commission meeting, but just to make sure that we're thorough in our presentation. From the planning commission, what percentage of developments dictated land space over the last 10 years? We discovered that currently less than 1%. Over the last 10 years, we were only able to find four developments whose land was accepted for park space. What percentage of the general fund are other Texas cities dedicating to the Parks and Recreation budget? That's been graphically depicted, and the percentages have been presented before you. Currently, Corpus Christi, as you can see, utilized 6.77% of its general fund towards open space and park operations. We were asked, were our medians included in the city's record of park acreage? And the answer is yes. According to the 2012 Parks and Recreation Master Plan, we do include medians in that count for city park acreage. Early in the discussions regarding the Community Enrichment Fund, we were asked, well, what would it look like if we left the FLO static and raised the park development fee from $200 to $250? And the answer to that was, it would barely move the needle. So we felt that that wasn't, that wasn't a process that city staff would recommend nor the development community. We were also asked how has residential development trended in the city over the last 10 years? And as you can see through the heat map, where blue is little development and red is increased development. As you can expect, the majority of development has taken place in the south side of the city. We were also asked to split the area development zones, specifically South Side and Padre Island, so it would be more in keeping with, or more in the spirit of that five-mile radius requirement. And so what we did, and if you look at the proposed ordinance, you'll see that we actually named 11 area development zones to account for South Side A, South Side B, and Mustang Island. We were also asked how much park land, to include federal, state, county, and city, is there in the city limits? We did the calculations. There's 2,100 acres of city-owned park acreage and 6,530.6 acres of open space and parkland total. We were also asked, well, what are the other cities below us? The top three cities, I mean, the next three cities below us, what are they doing regarding the Community Enrichment Funds? And we did look into that. Actually, we went to the five cities below us, the next five cities below us. And just like through our research, we discovered with the top seven cities, they're all over the place. There just has not been any rhyme or reason to how people are charged for open space, and we couldn't find some type of trend on why that is, so we just had to believe that each community is charging these fees in accordance with their community needs and their unique requirements. So with that being said, here are our recommendations, which is included in the ordinance amendment that's before you. The staff recommends we amend the UDC to rename the Community Enrichment Fund to the Park Development Fund, dissolve the five-mile radius requirement and restrict the use of fee, I mean, reduce the, restrict the use of fees to the city area development zones of the contributing residential development. We're going to change the FLO from a formula-based fee to a flat rate per dwelling unit. We recommend the fiscal year '22 fee be established as $462.50 per dwelling unit. We recommend that the park development fee be dissolved. We will be recommending to council that they adopt the proposed fiscal year '22 Community Enrichment Fund budget. We're also recommending that the city's finance policy be updated to require that the city manager present a proposed CEF budget with the operating budget and capital budget. We are removing language allowing for a refund if fees are not spent within seven years. And we are recommending that the Assistant City Manager of Park and Recreation maintain supervision over Community Enrichment Fund revenues and expenditures versus the Assistant City Manager of Development Services. With that being said, that concludes my presentation, and we'll stand by for any questions or concerns.
Commissioner York? Well, the problem is, I guess it's geared for the council meetings, so when somebody hits a button, I don't know who. I just happened to see Mike hit it.
Just want to take it? You can go first. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I've got a couple of questions. Let me start with. Bear with me for a minute. Let me find that table. I'm looking for the fees collected, okay, here it is, fees collected in the past 10 years.
Yes, sir.
So we've got the fee in lieu of land, and then we also have the park development fee.
Yes, sir.
But the fee in lieu of land is the only restricted dollars that can be used within the five-mile or, you know, and the various other stuff, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And then the park development fee could be used on any city park.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So the proposed, the proposed calculation of $462.50 a home site, is that $200 still buried in there somewhere that can be used anywhere, or are those dollars 100% restricted to these zones?
No, sir. They will be 100% restricted to these zones. There's no hidden $200 fee. And the only nuance is that they'll be restricted to the area development zone, but they won't be restricted to only the acquirement of land. It'll be either, the fund will be able to.
Wait, wait, back that up. Start over again. Sorry.
The FLO is supposed to be used for acquiring land, and then the park development fee is for any use.
Right.
Yes.
Swings, hats, whatever.
Yes, sir. Whereas now, we're restricting, we're doing basically a hybrid, where we'll restrict it to an area development zone, but it could be utilized for the purchase of land or for park improvement. but it could be utilized for the purchase of land or for park improvements. That way, the parks and recreation department, hands are tied if they need to utilize funding to make improvements. They can still make improvements, but the improvement is better be made near or around the contributing development.
Okay, so I guess there was a part in there that I, that I was not aware of. So the fee in lieu of land that's been collected, you know, for the past 10 years is $3,490,000. Is that currently restricted for the purpose, purposes of purchasing land?
And, and let me stand corrected. It's not, it's not for the, the purchase of land, I apologize. It's restricted by the area.
Okay.
It still can be used for improvements, but it has to be, is restricted to the area. So you're absolutely correct on that part. I was mistaken about the requirement for a land purchase.
Yeah, I honed in on that land purchase deal because obviously, you know, based on your response to my RFI about how many developers have dedicated land in lieu of paying the fees. I mean, it's like, almost like we should be applying pressure to get land in lieu of fee because you have areas like London and, and the south side where these, most of the new development's going. And the amount of money that the developers, you know, paying in fees does not outweigh the, the intrinsic value of the land itself.
Yeah, that's it.
So we're, we're, we're going to end up with a lot of dollars looking for a home at some point. But, but the fact that, that this is going to empower you to be able to purchase land and create that is, is going to be a good thing.
Yes, sir.
And I, and I like the way it's, everything's being simplified. I guess the, the biggest question and, you know, those that have concerns with this, the timing of this is tied directly to the completion of the, of the city audit and figuring out where all, all of these dollars that were collected, you know, in this, in this table, where they were applied and where they applied to the right areas and everything else. Because from what I understand, this proposal would be retroactive?
No, sir.
No? So it would, would, but this is still going to start in fiscal year 22 in October or? When would this start?
Our ordinance, our ordinances, this ordinance, if adopted by council, would be effective upon publication, which is normally the following Monday from the council adoption.
Okay. So I guess the, the concern is if I'm a, you know, basically if I'm a home buyer, right? And I've purchased a home and somewhere buried in my, in my, my purchase price, and I'm sure 98% of the home buyers don't understand this, but somewhere buried in my home price is, call it $500, right? And $200 of that is for park development anywhere in the city of Corpus Christi. If I wanted to go to Cole Park or, you know, Hazel Baysmore or wherever. $200 of, of my money is going to enriching those properties. And then I've got another, you know, for the sake of argument, call it $262.50 that part of my home purchase has gone towards something that's going to be relatively close to my house for my kids to ride their bikes to. And so where that money's, if, if I've purchased, or if I'm a developer and I've, you know, contributing, contributed to these funds under a certain set of circumstances or certain set, set of understandings. And I just want to make sure that those dollars that are, that were there, that were paid into the fund prior to the adoption of this text amendment, you get properly allocated.
Yeah, so under the new policy, they're still pay, the, the funds are still going to be used within the area development plan where they, they arose from. So the, whoever, the subdivisions that paid into those fees are still going to benefit from those fees, the usage of those fees.
But you're talking about the area development or are you talking about the actual geographic limitations as set forth in the community enrichment fund text as it was whenever those fees were?
Talking the five mile radius?
Either the five mile radius or there's natural barriers or SBID or 37 or whatever.
Actually, that leads into part of one of my questions. I kind of want to add on to that because one of the questions I had, and I asked this in the, the beginning, is there's language in there, you know, whether it's five mile radius, natural barriers, or you have the area development zones. There, the whole intent is to put the money in the park that the people are most likely to use. And there was language in there that says that. Is that language going to remain? Because it doesn't really matter whether it's five mile ra, to me, whether it's five mile radius, area development zones, it's all the same concept. You may clean it up a little bit, but the whole point is to use it where people are going to benefit, where their dollars went into the, you know, into the fund. So there was language in there that said that, and then it also said the five mile radius. Is that language going to be in there? Because we, I don't see that in the presentation. And to me, that's more important than the, than the zones.
Well, that, again, that, that's the purpose of using the zones is to, yes, the, the park may not be right next, right down the street from you, but if, if it's within a mile of your subdivision, you're still accessible, it's still accessible to you.
Understand that, but to me, the language is important because like I said, if you have this area development zone, like you, you know, you have the, the map you showed earlier. That south side one is huge. But when you showed the map of the, the, the different colors of where the development has gone on, that, you know, was like blue and then it goes orange and yellow was the hottest. The yellow was basically right on top of Billwitt Park, which hasn't improved anything since I played baseball there years and years and years ago. And nothing's been done. All these other parks have gotten money. Where's all that money going? And so that's why I say that, that, whether it was the five mile radius zone, which has been in place, or it's this new zone, that's still a huge area. Where are those dollars going? Because as I understand, the current and the proposed still have that same intent and that language, I think, that says this money should be used in the park most likely, the regional park most likely to be used, which in that south side case would be Billwitt. And so I'm just, I'm, is that language still going to be in there and, you know, is that going to be used?
The, the language is currently isn't in there and we did try to, I mean, we didn't try. We did replace it with area development zone and I'll tell you why. We understand the spirit of the ordinance and, and we definitely agree that it should be utilized in a facility that is most likely be utilized by the development. But because that language is so, it's two problems. Number one is ambiguous. So the way that I define a park is most likely going to be utilized versus how the developer defines how a park is most likely going to be utilized just leaves more and more room for misinterpretation and more conflict between city staff and developers, number one. And then number two, that language regarding, that, that language regarding, I mean, that language also leads to, I mean, the language also leads to us trying to barrel down on those expenditures and example, the budget line items. And that's how you kept on, because we're trying to meet that intent and trying to meet that ambiguity, that's how you start seeing the balloon in the budget line of bloom, 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 bloom. So when we talked to the development communities, it was like, hey, let's simplify this. Let's make it very discreet. Let's, let's show the boundaries, you know, and that we all can agree on exists and we all know. And that's the area development zone. When you start saying, hey, well, it's going to be this park that's most likely to be here. Well, I could say, well, that's this parking. You could say it's this park or Dante could say it's this park. And it just leads to more misinterpretations and more, more convolution in the community enrichment fund process. And that's what we're trying, that's what we were tasked to resolve.
I guess I get the point, but to me, it seems like the, the zone versus the five mile radius is really just cleaning up a, a problem you had on the accounting end, not a problem on the practical end.
Yeah, it, it, it.
I don't feel like it's very ambiguous to say the park most likely to be used, the regional park. Because again, if you grew up here, like on the south side, there's only one, it's Billwitt. And then if you go to London, there is no park there yet. You know, no regional major park for that money to be spent at.
But also in district five, you could say, hey, well, there's Billwitt. But if you look at all the different parks that's within Billwitt and we have the graphic, it's like 47 parks.
Right, but regional parks.
But when you pin the language, well, the parks that they're most likely to use, well, pick, pick one of the 47. I mean, it, that, there's 40, that leads for 47 different interpretations on which park facility that is because there's so many park facilities in district five. So if we had, number one, language that was discreet and well-defined, like the area development zones, which we were suggesting, then number two, good management amongst the parks and recreation department and oversight amongst the management office, which was lacking in the past, we will be able to ensure that those community needs are met. Because no one understands the community needs like the parks and recreation director. And we feel that given, given him the tools like the area development zone, it's going to put the accounting nightmare away, going to put the misinterpretation away, and we'll be able to have a more transparent process for the general public.
I mean, I, I'll be the first one to, to say that I think some improvements are, are needed to, to make it easier to administer, you know, these funds. But, you know, and here in the presentation, I think where, where I still remain leery is, you know, and, and I think the last time this came to, to planning commission, I don't remember if we had tabled this item until the audit was, we had recommended to table the item until the audit was complete. I, I know now it's back on the agenda, which was very surprising to me, but, but, you know, what it feels like and here's like to me is we're not really sure how that money was spent and if it was spent in accordance with what the plans are. And I think that was kind of the whole point of the audit was, you know, did the funds go to the area that, that they were most likely to? And, and, you know, when you hear the presentation, it was 167 items or 65 and it's going here or there and it makes it tough. I mean, you know, my concern and, and the reason I recommended we table it till the audit was complete was shouldn't we understand what we've already done with the money and have a good, sound accounting of that? And, and I don't, based on what I'm saying, I, I, is the audit complete? Because it, I mean.
And I, I can respond to that. So I do remember that we had the discussion, let's wait till the audit. And I specifically stated, well, I don't know when the audit is going to be completed. And then someone, one of the commissioners stated, well, it's going to be completed February 8th. And I said, no, that's impossible. It's so common that there's no way that it's going to be done by February 8th. And there was a confidence that it was going to be done for the eighth. Well, now that timeline has shifted to March 9th. And again, from individuals like Dante and myself, who has intimate detail with the community enrichment fund and our attempt to try to unravel it, I don't have confidence that it's going to be done by March 9th. So we can keep saying we're going to push this back until the audit is complete. But that, the problem is that to continue to push it back just allows the problem to continue to fester and become even more deteriorated. So. No, no, this, this fiscal year. So, and, and so I, I definitely understand the, the concerns regarding past expenditures. What we're trying to do is trying to improve this process going forward. And we're, we're trying to be forward-looking with the respect that, hey, well, there's, there's auditing being done on the past. But if we continue to push our ability to finally get a process in place that improves the future, then we're going to continue to allow it to deteriorate and it's just going to continue to be a problem that festers, that's just going to dig a bigger hole for the city.
Well, and, and, and obviously to me, these numbers are more palatable because the, the increases in fees has come way, way down. Which, you know, again, I still wish, as, as a matter of practice, as we have these presentations, that, that, that we have cities that are really comparable to the city size of Corpus. Because frankly, I don't care what Houston's doing and I don't care what Dallas is doing, but I do care what cities close to our size are doing, both a little bit smaller and a little bit larger. And I appreciate y'all making an effort, you know, on that because I think we need to justify to, to the citizens of Corpus, you know, what the fees are. No doubt you've got a tangled web here, but, but again, as a, you know, as, as a developer, as a citizen, if, if we're earmarking fees to go to this fund, the fund should be held accountable to administer things the way it was adopted to do. And, and I think based on what I'm hearing, your guess is as good as mine if that's happened or not. And so, you know, again, do I think changes need to be made going forward? I guess I just wish, I wish we had the results of the audit, you know, because that, you know, I know this has come to the planning commission, I think this is the third time now that we've seen this. And, and, you know, again, from a, just from a confidence standpoint, it, it's tough when you say, how was the money being spent? And, and, and I'm not saying it's your fault.
Oh, yes, sir.
But the situation is, I don't think we know. And, and I don't think we know for, for people that are in district one or district two or three or four or five, did they get their fair share, you know? Or did funds that were, were in these hot zones go to, you know, Cole Park or wherever development was? And, and again, those continue to be answers that, you know, we don't know.
Yes, sir.
And it's concerning to me, so.
I have a question on your fees and I agree. I, I, I mean, I do have a few questions, but ultimately I, I think it's important that we get this audit. And I realize there's things that need to be fixed, but just like I was bringing up earlier, I, I still see problems with the way that this is written. It seems again like there, it fixes an accounting problem, but doesn't fix the practical problem of where to spend the funds. And I, I would really like to see, like the area development zone to me, and, and then I'll move to the questions. I think the area development zones would be great for the regional park problem. But like you mentioned, 47 parks, when you go down to the, the neighborhood parks, putting it in a park that's three, four miles away or, you know, one mile away, doesn't really benefit anybody on the neighborhood level. So I think it might be a good idea to see two different, you know, scenarios there. One for the neighborhood park spending or local, whatever, whatever the term is, and one for a regional park. And I think that could be done pretty, pretty easily. But the question I wanted to ask or questions, there were two. I, I noticed you, the fee came down, you consolidated, it came down based on your, your talks with developers. I understand that. But with a lot of the fees and the changes in fees, because I, I realized they haven't been changed in years. And so staff came out that we're going to bring these fees. They jumped way up. They had meetings with development community and they've come down, but they're going to be incrementally increased. So my question is, the fee that you've come up, the 400 something dollars, do y'all have a plan to incrementally increase that in place yet? Or, you know, is there a, do you have numbers for that in the coming years or is there just a, we plan to increase it?
So let me make, so we didn't bring the fee down just because of discussion with development community. Fee that's before you is a reflection of, we heard feedback from the planning commission. It was like, okay, we get it. And in addition, we had discussions with the city council. There were some councilmen that stated the concerns about the impact on all the different fees across the city. Now we have the community enrichment fund fee, houses impacting the individual home buyer. So we get it and we understand that, you know, there's a lot more pressing priorities in the city, like with DSD and fees. So that was really made us decide to sharpen our pencil, you know, and make a fee that's reflective of the concern that was conveyed to us by you all and our, our other governing body. So regarding that fee, the answer is no, we don't have any immediate plans to raise the fee or, oh, yeah, I'm sorry, beyond the CP, the annual CPI, which will begin in two years from now. But as far as internal staff talks about some dramatic increase in the fees, the answer is no. I think we're more of a thought process, okay, let's fix the system, let's perfect the system and let's see if it works. If it doesn't work, then we'll have discussions with the building communities, city council and commission later. But at the moment, we're not having those point, those discussions at this point.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question I had is along the same lines. There's a, one of the last recommendations is that, that the ACM will have the ability to adjust that, that FLO fee amount. And if I'm reading that right, it sounds like assistant city manager can then come in and change that fee amount. And I don't know if that's, are there limits on that or is that just to go up with inflation, that kind of thing? But the question I had is, how, how does that fee change now? Does it require planning commission, council action, all that? And now we're changing that to where just one person can change it or?
I, I think that, that, I think that that's old, yeah, old legacy language. We can get rid of that because the reality is the ACM or parks and recreation can't change a fee. That fee is established by county, city council. City council adopts that fee. Well, the spirit of that language was supposed to say, hey, they'll maintain oversight and basically referee any discussions that's being had between development community and parks. and, uh, park staff. Um, and just basically try to settle the requirements, which we're doing on a daily basis on, uh, some items. But as far as the fee itself, no, you can't change it, that's, that's, that's established by City Council.
Okay, so that still requires Council action?
Yeah, the, the, the previous language in there for the, for the calculation of the fee it provided to the ACM will, will determine the fee based on the formula. He didn't, he didn't establish, I mean, he, he used the formula to, 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 to create the fee, but the, the fee was always just constant.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Mandel?
Thank you. Um, what is the timeline, or what would be the timeline on the use of the collected fees in these ADZs for land acquisition and park development? Um, let's use London as an example, thousand homes a year, possibly, right? 500 bucks a pop, half a million. How soon would Parks and Rec, um, you know, what, what would be their plan to acquire land in a timeline format?
Our intent is to put the money into production immediately. Um, I think that we all have seen the criticism that this, uh, funds has just been stacking up, stacking up over seven years till you see these large fund balances. And now that we have new seat of leadership, we agree that that's not a good prac, a good business practice. So, our intent is annually, we create the annual budget with the intent of, uh, having a plan and a strategy to spend the funds, uh, yearly, uh, just like the, um, just like they were purpose for in the UDC.
All right.
I think, I think to add to that, you know, we, we have to remember, and, and I'd like to note that this, these fees are, are intended to be a supplement to the current budget that we already have. So, it's not only these fees that are being utilized for the development of parks, but we're also using our regular operational budget, and then we go to Council, we look at the budget, you know, and, and they allocate funds specifically for the development of different parks. So, these are, these are supplemental funds, funds, these are not intended to fully fund the park system that we currently have. You know, this is a very small portion of the overall budget that we have.
Mr. Schrader?
Has, have you all, you know, I know this, this, this issue with, particularly with a park like Billwett, because there's so much decline in facilities out there, and it's, but it's, and it's so heavily used. Um, and I guess that area in general, that South Side B Zone, um, because there is, one, a lot of construction acti, home building activity out, still going on out there, and there's a lot of established parks and areas that are, that are pretty heavily used. Have you done any kind of sort of theoretical calculation just to show the kind of, um, fees that might be collected and, you know, what their uses, how far their uses would go, so to speak? I, I realize it's hypothetical, but I think the misperception is, is that because so many, so much of this fund is set in, in the fund for so long, that, um, the reality we're going to find is that they don't go as far as people think, like, that they will somehow fund, magically fund huge improvements, and between maintenance and, because these fees do go to maintenance as well as, uh, permanent improvements, or not?
Uh, improvements, sir.
Just improvements?
Improvements.
So, I think that would be, even that, showing that breakdown where, you know, where they're spent and what, where, you know, maintenance comes out of separately, just i- as an example area on something like Billwett, would be a very helpful tool to, um, show just, you know, the potential, um, sort of how far the dollars will go, so to speak.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, and we agree. Um, the, the Parks Department is getting more strategic, um, with a lot of different processes. This Community Rich Fund is just one more process that we want to become, um, more, uh, strategic versus reactionary, but we're really looking at this as a first thing first, let's fix this mess that it is, um, get it back on track and get proper processes in place. And then when we do have those processes in place, then that will put us in a position where we can start being more strategic, okay? How far does, how mu, make projections off of it. This is how much is going, we're projecting District Five is going to generate versus District Four, where do we want to put, um, this funding? And like you said, how far is this dollar going to go, uh, in that particular district? And then, understanding that, that's where we could say, all right, so we understand that's how far that dollar's going to stretch the Community Rich Fund, now let's start having the discussions about the park's operation budget, the capital budget, and those other different funding streams that we have to take care of parkland across the city.
Well, I think everybody recognizes too, and it, it, the most important thing that, that the city's doing with this is simplifying this process so that, that kind of strategic thinking can be done. When it's, when it's that comp, when it's as complicated as it is now, nobody ever gets as far, or people can't understand how that potentially could be done. So, the strategic thinking that is critical to really getting good value out of those dollars isn't, isn't ever done because it's too com- complex to get there. So, this, um, I think this is the single most powerful part of this, is the simplification.
Yes, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You know, additionally, I'd like to highlight that, you know, every year, we're taking the budget to, to Council. Every year, we're going to strategically look at the funds that we have and be able to spend those funds the ne, the following year. So, this is a process that's going to eliminate this, this, uh, legacy of convolutedness that has led us to this problem, where we have money there that has been accumulated over the years that we haven't spent. Every year, we're going to take the, the budget accounts, we're going to take the budget, we're going to create a nice and simplified strategic, uh, budget that will give you clarity and transparency as to how these funds are being spent, uh, as opposed to what we currently have. So, I think that should give you confidence that we're moving towards a more progressive and, and a, a much better process than we currently have. And there won't be questions as to, well, how, how did you spend those funds? Well, let's go back to the books and look at what we spent last year. I'll tell you exactly where it was spent.
I don't, I, what, what's the, what's your annual parks budget total?
Uh, right now, we're operating on, uh, 32 mil, 34 million dollars.
So, so, and we're looking at like 500, $550,000 annually on average?
Correct.
Out of that 32 million is, is the money we're talking about? And, and I agree 100% with the, especially since you broke up South Side A and South Side B, uh, it's, it's still going to be challenging, I think, to be able to purchase land in South Side A and South Side B with these dollars in London, because that, that land is so valuable at this point. Um, and, you know, I know Dan likes to keep the fees low, but the intent of, the intent of, of these tools is to develop parks, right? And, and we, I mean, like, like I said, I was astonished whenever I found out that Bart actually gave up some in London Town to dedicate the land, you know, whether it was because he didn't, what, didn't have confidence that the money was going to go towards, uh, anything in that area or what, but he still gave up the land, you know? And that land was worth a lot more than the dollars we're talking about here. Um, so it's going to be a challenge to purchase that land and, and find a home for these monies to go to. So, um, but I appreciate having to simplify it, because I don't want to sit there with a, with a compass and a, and a map and try to figure out five mile radiuses and everything else. But somebody else thought that was a good idea. Somebody else, um, people have already paid into that fund with the understanding that their money was going to go in those particular areas. So, I think that those dollars need to be honored, uh, as were originally intended. And then if this is something that this Commission and City Council decides to adopt moving forward, then that starts at that date. And that's my personal feelings.
Commissioner, just for clarity, uh, under, under the current process and, and under the proposed ordinance, the, the city still has the ability to accept land as part of the subdividing process, so the, the, the park development fee under the current, under the draft ordinance would be in lieu of the land dedication, so...
No, I, I understand that 100%, but we created this fee in lieu of, and now we should, now we should create a, a LIFO, a land in lieu of fee, because...
I actually have a question along those lines, because as a consultant in land development, the last eight or nine years, every time this has come up, the fee in lieu of was used because the city said, we don't want your land. And I always understood the reason for that was, they didn't have the money, or felt they didn't have the money to maintain the parks they had, so they definitely didn't want new land to maintain. So, I, I'm curious, is, is that changed at all? Is the city looking to get any? Because I, I, well, the point you're making is valid, the fees we're getting are not, you know, you're not going to be able to turn around tomorrow and purchase land for the, the, the money you've got, when you could, the land you've got, you know, land in lieu of fee, I guess, would have been much more valuable. Is the city currently, Parks and Rec are, are, you know, looking to actually take on new land, especially in some of these areas like London?
You know, uh, so, I can take that, that question, actually. So, it, it originated, originally started out like that, right? That, there was so many parks, and we had a, a, you know, we had to maintain them, so we, the Parks and Rec, and I can't speak on what was done in the past, but the background that we've done and the reasons I've done, it originated like that. And it eventually led to the develop, the, the developers giving us pieces of land that were not developed, that, that they could not develop either. So, then it started being smaller strips of land, uh, medians, that were not parks, you know, and they were calling linear parks. That created a problem now, uh, for us to not be able to accept those lands, because we would not then be able to, not only, we could maintain those now, but that we would, we could not develop them as, as part of parks. So, we started pushing them back and say, hey, look, we can't use these pieces of land, but we never got anything back to say like, hey, well, how about this other piece of land? So, then we took the fee, right? And we, as speaking on, on behalf of park, now we, I, I believe that we have now a better relationship with the developers, we have an open dialogue, and we do plan on interacting with them and, and making sure that we are, uh, planning on, on getting pieces of land that actually are more centralized to the development, that people don't become disenfranchised and not be able to use it, because even access to that is important. If you put a piece of park on, on a drainage zone, you disenfranchise the people that are on the other side of the development, because they'll never be able to get through it safely. So, we have to make sure that we engage with them on that. And we have certainly spoken on that, uh, with the developers. I think we're on the same page of, of maybe, uh, getting better pieces of land, uh, and, and that's also, that's still certain a possibility. So, it's, it's not that we're only not accepting those pieces of land because we want the money or we need the money, we weren't accepting it because they were not suitable.
The difference in the way developments happening now is closer to the way it is in parts of town, in the city, such a little tiny parks, right? Developers developing, and we've got one, two, 2,000, most likely, developments, things like that, so...
Yeah, it's easier to take the land when it's a larger development, but that, that's actually one point I wanted to make. So, this whole ordinance is geared towards overhauling the fee, but I, I think it would be a great idea to see some sort of overhaul on the rest of that ordinance. So, like you mentioned, how that land is dedicated, you know, I, I don't know how that needs to be done, but some way to make it better, so like you said, there's usable pieces of land.
And that comes down to communication.
Yeah, it, it comes to communication, and, um, I think what's absent in the conversation is, we are taking a look in, uh, look at that process and what we're accepting and where it needs to be accepted. It's not lossfulness that we need to be, uh, very proactive on all this development that's taking place in London, and those discussions are being had with Parks and Recreation Master Plan, um, crafting that document, explaining where these new parkland needs to be, uh, created, which is obviously London. And those discussions are being had with the development community, whether they're going to develop them, de- develop it, or if the city's going to develop it. So, it's not lossfulness, and it's definitely a priority that we're keeping at the forefront of our, um, our mind about park space, so...
Because it's not going to happen until the fees exist.
It might be too late already for London, a lot of that's already been...
Well, that's why they want to be able to use...
Liminary platter.
...dollars to go buy land right now and dedicate the parks and not have to worry about a developer dedicating...
I have one more question about the audit. Appreciate it. I, I did have one more question. We're talking about the audit, and obviously, my comment, I, I think there's still some things that could be improved, but, but on the audit, we keep hearing, you know, and yes, what, what you mentioned, Chairman, we, we didn't actually table, if I remember correctly, we didn't table to, until today, because the audit was gone, we, we have to pick a day. That's how, you know, they always tell us, we need to pick a day when we table. So, we had to pick a day, we tried to get to where we'd be past the audit. Obviously, that didn't happen. Um, and I know you're saying you don't have confidence, but do we have, are we able to hear from city auditor or somebody that has knowledge about it? Are they available to, to give us any kind of status update? Is that the city auditor? Cool.
Your lucky day.
Right.
Kimberly Houston from the City Auditor's Office. Um, so, yes, it, it's been a really, uh, challenge trying to get this audit completed, because we're looking at documentation beyond our existing financial system, where we have to get assistance from IT, um, to help us dig back some of these, uh, old records. Because what we're examining is not just where the money has been spent, but the plat that the funding source came from, to make sure where the plat originated is actually applied in the area in accordance with the UDC. Does that answer your question?
It helps. Did, do you have any sort of update on a timeline, or is there any end in sight yet?
Uh, that's, is a moving target. Now, we are trying to aim at, uh, now, we're a small shop, there's only, there's two of us digging through all these records. We send hundreds of document requests to the Parks Department, and they've been supplying this as we go, and we're examining everything as we go. In fact, we got, uh, three big batches of hundreds of documents today that we're going to be, um, knocking out tomorrow, so it, it's, it's just been a journey. Um, so, but we are trying to meet, meet a March 8th target date, that is our target date, of trying to wrap this project up.
Do you feel like that's a realistic date?
Um, it's, at this point, I see a, a path to an ending, yes. Uh, at this point, if Parks has not been able to providing the records, which enlarged in part because there's been a lot of turnover at staff, and a lot of that knowledge is gone, we're going to have to just use what records we have on hand to draw our conclusion.
Thank you.
Um, Buck, this may be a question for you, but based on the, the timeline, um, you know, if they're able to get that, if this passes or goes through tonight, what would be the timeline on this thing actually getting to City Council?
Staff is anticip, staff is anticipating March 22nd.
Okay, and so, if, it, let's say the audit didn't get ready, you know, March 8th or whatever, and, and now all of a sudden, this is going to, to City Council, they, maybe they have the results of the audit and have already reviewed it, or maybe not, they still have the opportunity to, I guess, approve or deny, or, I mean, do they have the ability to table this item once it gets through Commission?
Yeah, absolutely, uh, City, absolutely, City Council has the ability to, uh, table an item.
Sorry, on, to build on that, I just, one more thing on the audit question. So, when the audit's done, what, what happens? Is there a presentation to, to Council, or to us and Council? How, how does that work?
So, where the process of an audit goes is after the report is issued, we schedule a meeting, and next is called exit conference with management, where we go over all of our findings and our recommendations, and then management has to respond to the, our recommendations with solutions. And once those, we, we examine those solutions, determine whether or not they, uh, address our recommendations, and then we present those findings to our audit committee. Half, half of, um, City Council is, makes up audit committee. So, we have our report, report presented to the audit committee, we go over the entire report, and it's shared with the entire City Council. And after our audit comes out, we do come back and follow up on that audit. Usually it's around, um, one year or 18 months after the audit report comes out, and we issue our findings on whether or not, um, management implemented the changes that they said they were.
Okay, so you, you mentioned, audit comes out, you give a report to management, and they come up with solutions to fix that. How, how long, if you have to guess, that, does it, I mean, is that like, does it take a month before they turn around and they have solutions, or a couple of weeks, or?
Generally, that's a two to three week turnaround.
Okay.
But during the whole entire process, uh, we communicate with management, so nothing is a surprise by the time that draft report comes out.
And I guess where I'm going with that is, it, you know, the whole thing that seems to be going is, we, we would like to see this, though there's some solutions being presented to Council before they have to act on this proposed amendment here, and so, is it safe to say, if you're thinking, if you guys hit this March 8th, then two to three weeks, so end of March, then Council would be able to see the solutions that management, staff and management have come up with?
Now, that March 8 deadline is, is actually our intended presentation to the audit committee.
So, where would that put the, when would you think you would have the solutions, I guess?
So, it, that would be that March 8 date.
Oh, you would have the solutions by then?
Mm-hmm, that's our target date.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, let me, um, a, a few things, and I don't want, I don't want to come off as knocking the audit committee.
Thank you.
As I stated before, at a previous meeting, it's, it's a nightmare with being placed in the auditor's lap, especially with two people trying to go through 14 years. especially with two people trying to go through 14 years of information that's, in some cases, is not even there. As I stated before in previous presentations to you all, it's almost to the point where you need to get a forensic accountant to try to dig through that yarn of information that's with the Community enrichment fund. And so I'd be very hesitant for us to continue to table a major policy that's going to approve a city process for the audit. Because that's gonna be challenging, especially when it's an ordinance that's, it's gonna improve. The development community believes that it's gonna improve it. City staff is gonna have tools that makes it more transparent and it's gonna benefit the general public. And you're asking for, well, what about the results of the audit? Well, this, this presentation, this recommendation to you all actually is the response to the audit. We're waiting for the audit to come, but we're making the changes and responses now. So when the audit does come out, it's not gonna tell us anything we don't already know. Poor accounting, too many of this, wasn't keeping up with this. Yeah, well, we know that's why we have spent the last year working on a solution to bring before city council and the planning commission. So by the time that the audit does catch up to us, it's almost gonna be a copy and paste job because we already have it fixed.
I guess I'd like to kind of reinforce that a little bit in a different way. I've struggled since the last, last meeting in this, and further still in this meeting, to understand how these two need to be coupled. And I've kind of come to the conclusion that I don't believe, I mean, we're, what's on the table for us to make a decision on, the way I'm seeing this, is moving forward, how is the best way to collect funds and be able to strategize the use of those funds and to prove up their, that they were used properly when they're spent? And so that, that seems to be what we're deciding here. The past, the audit of past expenditures, to me, is largely a different question. Because if we were to be basing this, this decision on, well, if not enough dollars were spent in this district, are we going to change the formula or how that's collected? I don't think so because that makes it even crazier than it was before. So I really do see the, I mean, I do, I'd love to see this when it's done, but as a separate issue is, you know, how can we, you know, what remedies are for those past expenses? And, but those are, those are different remedies, in my opinion, and what's, what's before us is, the, that we're going forward, we're going with an improved system, an improved system that allows better transparency to the public, I believe, the way it's structured, and it allows better strategy. So.
Commissioner Schrader is, the way this UDC text amendment is structured, it's going to absolve some sins of the past. And, and there's, there's questions about remaining balances and how those are gonna be divvied out. And there's 55% gonna go to District 5 and 16% to District 4 or whatever from these remaining balances to kind of satisfy this whole budget nightmare. And y'all, I cannot imagine, because I just try to think about it to myself, how I'm going to, you know, satisfy accounting for these funds because it just seems like a nightmare. And I think everybody's in agreement that this is a winner, right? It's just a question of where does it start? And what happens to the dollars that have already been paid in under a certain assumption? And, and so that, that's the concern right now. I think, I think everybody's in agreement that this is a winning plan that's gonna simplify everything. It's just what happens to the dollars that have already been committed.
I, I understand that, but I don't, I didn't understand that approving this ordinance change encumbered us to determine how those dollars, those.
Well, it just becomes effective immediately, right, Buck? I mean, so, so whatever dollars are within that fund are no longer restricted. They become actually more restricted with this plan because you don't have the $200 park development fee that can go anywhere, right? So now all these dollars are gonna go specifically to these different development zones. But it starts, it would, it would become effective immediately. So the fund balances that are there now would automatically go to these zones based on, on this new plan. So dollars that have already been kicked in under a certain assumption are gonna go to these zones as opposed to where they had intended for those dollars to go whenever they were paid in.
Well, that depends, sir. That's really, and that's why we're putting together a Community enrichment fund budget. And the fiscal year '22 budget, of course, will be built off of the fund balance in the Community enrichment fund. And we have our recommendations on how those fundings should be spent. We did have a discussion with city council on how we recommend the funding should be spent, but it's really going to come down to council.
Yeah, I saw that.
And their school of thought, hey, no, we want it to be grandfathered like this or, or they're really gonna decide how they're gonna divvy it up. And, you know, there's a divide in different schools of thought. Some council has it gonna happen and it's gonna probably take, you know, a couple of conversations before we come to a conclusion on that. But that point and that concern is not lost. And that's just one more challenge and one more discussion that we're gonna have to have with council.
Well, I'd, I'd give you a thumbs up vote on this today if the rule started tomorrow, right? So if you collected a, what's now being called altogether as a park development fund fee from a development that started tomorrow and it was allocated to these different zones, I'm all for that. I'm thumbs up. It's just what happens to the dollars that were collected last year, the year before, the year before, the year before, the year before, that have accumulated. I know that y'all have come up with a cool formula that says, you know, this is gonna go to five, this one's gonna go to 14, the salad's all gonna be divvied up. But bottom line is, somebody paid that money with the understanding that it was going to be used in that quagmire that you got to unwind over there. So I think, I think that needs to be honored.
Yeah, yes, sir.
And so Commissioner Miller, you, the way you've read this, I guess, because I missed that. I thought, what I just thought I heard ACM Young mention here was that that was essentially decoupled.
Yes, you're correct, sir. That's decupped from this whole ordinance that's before you all.
The park development fee?
No, how the, how the past, how the funds that are accumulated there now, that is not what we're voting on today.
Yeah, that's two totally separate issues. As I stated, that's gonna be multiple discussions and probably some planning sessions on that. Was before you all, it's simply the amendment to improve the process.
I guess I'm gonna withhold on this until, we may have a council member speak on this because I don't feel I'm hearing the same thing there, so.
I do have a question on these lines real quick and sorry, I guess it's a dumb question this late in the game. But can you explain, what's the ultimate point of the audit? And I ask because you mentioned that although the audit's not done, the solutions you're presenting here, you know, you don't need to wait for the audit to be done because we know what the solutions need to be. And I kind of get what you're saying, but I mean, what I'm asking is, was the point of the audit so that we can figure out what went wrong and then help use that info to determine how to fix it, which is what this ordinance is? Or is it just to figure out where the money went, where it wasn't supposed to go, so they can rectify that somehow retroactively? What was the ultimate goal?
So the objective of the audit does incorporate recommendations that management is already taking, addressing right now. So a large piece of that was removed from our examination because they were making corrective action now. So we redirected our objective to examine the expenditures that were spent, to identify if there were any expenditures that were spent on any park or park improvements that were made outside of the UDC. So if we, as for example, if we identified that there were some fees that were, park improvements or parks, that were expenditures that were paid on the area outside of what's in the UDC, then we will make a recommendation to manage, a corrective action to management to either reallocate it back to where it should be or come up with another solution and get council input.
Okay. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but you seem to have the answers. Would this ordinance or this amendment being adopted, you know, by council in the near future, would that, you know, how would that affect your, your ability to complete the audit or would it affect you at all?
No, it wouldn't affect me at all. Any outcome of the audit or action plans that come from the audit comes directly from management and direction from city council. I just present what we find, what we recommend, and then management comes in with the solutions and then city council will decide whether or not that's so.
And then just to be clear, the, I think you said that the solutions being presented here have already basically come from your audit department?
No.
Is that correct?
No. What I'm saying is, for example, we're saying that if our audit result came out to say that the current language in the UDC regarding Community enrichment fund is a bit convoluted and it makes accounting for the funds and allocating for the expenditure complex, and we recommend management to make improvements to that to make it more concise and clear, then this would be an example of a path that management has taken to make the UDC language more concise and clear and addressing a solution. So instead of us taking, you know, going through the UDC as Parks Management and city executives have gone through the UDC to make some suggested changes, that's something they're already doing because that would more likely be something that would come out of the audit. So instead of examining the language in the UDC and suggesting improvements to the UDC, we're looking at how the expenditures were spent over the past five years. And we're looking at to see whether or not they were actually spent where they were intended under the spirit of the UDC.
Okay.
I just need to clear up something though, so I can fully understand because I'm as confused as Sheldon is, I think. And I'm just gonna use an example. Let's say, let's say $5 was collected in Cal Allen and three of those $5, your audit finds out, was spent on Padre Allen, right? Now, you're gonna create, you're gonna make suggestions on how that $3 can be credited back to Cal Allen, right?
We're gonna identify like this $3 was misspent.
Was misspent.
And should have been spent over here.
Should have been spent over there and then we gotta figure out a way to.
Management needs to, one, decide either to, one, spend according to what the UDC has spoken to or present to city council an alternative way and get city council's direction on how they should spend it.
Now, let's say, let's say that happened and we, and this, and in the interim, this UDC text amendment gets, gets adopted by city council. Does that change anything with regards to how that money was, how that money was spent inappropriately and how we're going to satisfy that budget line item?
Proposed.
Well, so that would be without, this is all hypothetical because I don't wanna speak too much on the audit before a report comes out. But in a hypothetical scenario, that would be something we recommend to city council. If management is making a move towards implementing what the existing changes are, then that's something that city council will have to decide. Do they want to, like Mr. Dr. Young was saying, that we're not want to follow the existing language of the UDC and spend the money that's been collected to date under the old UDC? And, or do they want to roll it over into the new plan? That's something that we would recommend to city council to decide on.
There's, but.
Okay, City Councilman Gil Hernandez, representing District 5. And I don't wanna, like I said, I didn't want to put any undue influence on you and I don't speak for the entire council. What I wanted to say is that there's some, you know, some things that I had some principles on. And a lot of the audit, I'm also the chairman of the audit committee and I asked for the audit to be placed on the Community enrichment funds because of the mismanagement of past, no, no harshness on you or the existing management. It's just it was mismanaged in the past. It wasn't, the accounting wasn't correct. However, that can, it can be corrected. It's simple as much, you know, if the, if the accounting would have been by park, like the UDC says, the one that's most likely to be used by the, by that subdivision, taking into consideration natural barriers like highways, arterial roads, Oso Creek, and no more than five miles. I believe the five mile, the five miles is not the standard. It's one portion of the standard. So I want to make sure that's clear. I think our Assistant City Manager Neiman mentioned the five mile thing three times, but didn't mention any of the other requirements. So Commissioner York had mentioned that specifically, that there is a standard, that the one that's, primary standard is the one most likely to be used by that subdivision. The other side, the other thing I want to mention is that I agree with Commissioner Miller in the sense that if we made an agreement in black and white in the UDC that it was gonna be spent, the money that was collected in a certain way should be spent in accordance with that. We shouldn't change the rules on how that money is spent after we've collected the money. So that, from, just from a principle standard, I think that should be the case. So I don't have an issue with the recommendations that the city staff has come forward with. It does simplify things. It does restrict it a little bit more. The $200 on the park development fee could have been spent anywhere in the city and I think a lot of that can be, will come out in the audit. But specifically in terms of what we've collected already, it should be in accordance with what the written language of the UDC is. We shouldn't, you know, that, that was the, when the developers handed the check over for that, for that development, that was the expectation to be how it was to be spent. The fact that we mismanaged shouldn't change that. And, you know, a lot of what I do as city council, as a city councilman is deal with sins of the past. Obviously, you know, the streets and, you know, we haven't replaced, we've replaced how many park pieces of equipment this year?
Which kind?
Playground equipment.
Playground equipment, we've replaced five.
And then last year?
I don't know how many last year.
Okay, well, we've, we've replaced quite a bit and we hadn't, and that hadn't been the case for many times. We're actually doing a master plan for all parks, including Billwitt. And that was, that was me taking the city manager a week before he started as a city manager out to our parks and showing him Billwitt that had been there for years and never had a master plan. How do you spend money on a park without a plan? So, do you have it? Okay, so I was correct. Didn't want to address you too much in terms of your, on how you do this. I want to make sure that, you know, there's some information that was cleared up, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to add to public comment on item number 12? With there being none, we'll close the public comment period and I'll take a recommendation on item 12.
I'll make a, make a motion that we approve item 12 as submitted and I'll make note that. And I'll make note that based on what we've heard here, I don't believe that approval of this ordinance change will encumber resolving past fund expenditure issues.
I make a motion that we table this item till March nine as proposed audit plan come in to discuss this further. Table this item till March ninth.
All second.
So point of clarification is, what would be the next scheduled planning commission meeting after that March eight? Is it March ninth?
I believe March ninth is correct.
Okay.
Okay.
But I will also add, I believe, the staff is still moving forward with this for the March twenty-second? No?
Twenty-second.
The council.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to table this item until March ninth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to item number thirteen, rezoning case. I, I thank Andrew at this point, due to the inclement weather, the developer plane got canceled this morning, I guess, due to ice up in Dallas.
Correct, yes, sir.
Requested to table the item. I know we do have some, some citizens here that may be wishing to speak on this item and we can open the, the item for public comment so that their...
Yes, sir.
Their comments can be received for the record. So I guess at this time, do you?
Sure, actually, but to save everyone's time, I can open it up if you've had a chance to review the case or have any questions up front of staff. And then you can always open it for, for public comment.
I, so I, I assume the special permit that we granted for that property is that, that facility is going to go elsewhere at this point, or?
I'm sorry, do you, can, can you just roll through it like super quick?
Sure, no problem, makes perfect sense. So what you have on the screen right now is the, of course, this is case zero two 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 dash oh five. It is a request by ERF Real Estate Incorporated to rezone the property.
I'm black.
Okay. The request is essentially at the corner of South Alameda and Everhart Road. This is the formal, former Mount Carmel assisted living facility site. The request is from the RM one and RM one special permit. Those of you who were on the commission at the time, this was a case back in 2018, that received a special permit. The applicant is requesting to go to the CN one neighborhood commercial district. As you'll see on this slide, again, the property is currently zoned a combination of multifamily and multifamily with an SP. There are some surrounding commercial properties to the south and to the east consisting of Town and Country Shopping Center, and then you have some other shopping centers south of, south Alameda, immediately to the north and on both sides to the east and west, you do have properties zoned, single family residential. Of the twenty notices sent out, we received one in favor and two in opposition. Now, staff analysis and recommendation, as I'm sure, again, you've had time to kind of parse through the staff report, there are some items that we as staff are concerned about. Of course, going back to the 2018 case, the concern was focused on the property that is located on this part of the screen, being zoned RM one with a special permit. The entire point of the special permit was to reduce the types of uses to those that essentially did not create large amounts of traffic or noise. So there were specific items that were stricken, things that had drive-through functions or had cars that would be in queue waiting. I believe even some other things that were stricken were like blood plasma donation centers. The neighborhood was very specific on the types of uses they were comfortable with. Now, it still allows small retail, it still allows offices. There is a whole host of uses that are allowed as part of that special permit, but we upfront wanted to support the agreement we had with the neighborhood back in 2018, which was ultimately adopted by council. Second, the portion of the RM one that you have facing Everhart, if that was to go to CN one, again, when we think about uses, it's not purely one specific use versus another, it's all of the uses allowed in CN one. So if you were to have, let's say, a fast food chain, that's going to drive quite a bit of traffic onto a two-lane road that specifically cannot handle that influx. Second, you'll see kind of more the encroachment of the CN one going into more of the residential area. One of the decisions that we used back in 2018 to support the CN one to the south portion was that it was in line with the Town and Country Shopping Center. You're maintaining almost a proverbial line in the sand before you start to transition to other zoning districts. Multifamily is a logical transition district between commercial to low residential. And with that, after deliberation and discussion, we as staff are recommending denial. And if there are any questions, we'd be more than happy to address them.
The, the triangular shape portion of that property, was that, refresh my memory, was that also part of our special permit at the time?
No, sorry. So the, the entire site was originally zoned RS six, single family, going back to the 50s when the Mount Carmel site was built. When that was demolished, the first rezoning case came about of having this entire block CN one. That's what started the process of a special permit and discussion with the neighborhood. So that's why the breakdown is as it is today.
Right, but I'm sorry, the, the, it's not labeled on here, but it says subject, where it says subject property, that, that wedge, that is...
This remains RS six.
RS six, okay.
So it's not being, it wasn't touched in 18 and it's not being touched today.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone?
Yes, sir.
My name is William Grady and I live at three thirty Aberdeen, which Everhart coming up towards the Bay Dog Legs into Aberdeen for the last three blocks up towards the Bay. So my concern is traffic, you know, egress and ingress from Everhart into and out of whatever might be proposed to, for that tract of land. I really didn't understand that graphic up here, it looked like there was a shaded area along Alameda and then down the Carmel side of, of the whole lot. But, but was there any designation about the rest of it between, over to Everhart? Do you know what I'm saying? Or is that just not a part of the property?
So what we'll see on the screen here is this portion of...
Yeah, this is what I'm talking about.
Will remain residential. The portion in question is the hatched area and the applicant is requesting the same zoning as here, which is neighborhood residential, I'm sorry, neighborhood commercial.
Is this Everhart?
Everhart is...
Oh, that's, no, that can't be Everhart. That's Everhart?
Yes.
Where is Alameda?
Aberdeen weaves through in this direction, Santa Fe would be here.
Oh, I'm sorry, so this, okay, I'm, I'm sorry to have to do this, but what is this designated?
Single family residential.
And this?
Is currently a combination of multifamily and multifamily with a special permit.
And why is this circled?
This, it was already obtained, this already obtained the neighborhood commercial designation.
And then what's this area that's not?
That, this is what's being requested to convert and rezone potentially to neighborhood commercial.
Would it have any exits and entrances onto Everhart?
Correct.
It would?
Yes.
I don't like that. I, I was, I'm fine with this. I had heard that, when I called down about this hearing, that the only thing that was proposed was a Starbucks on Alameda and she didn't have any more information about, you know, how the rest of it might be used, which is why I'm here. And I don't like the idea of anything coming in, having to use Everhart as an entrance or, or an exit. It's, it's already a really well-traveled road. And, you know, now that I think about it, it would be fine if, if it did not include any kind of like truck and delivery type stuff, because then that becomes a problem because, you know, they're, as long as they don't go up towards Ocean Drive, which I think they're not allowed to do anyway. I, I have another question, I guess to you, and what would be, what kind of housing would, what are the various kinds of housing that would be allowed in the areas that we've talked about? I mean, you said, single family for one area?
Currently, the RM one zoning allows either single family residential or multifamily, which could be duplexes or apartments.
And are you proposing something different for that?
What the applicant is requesting is neighborhood commercial. That allows offices, retail, restaurants.
And I'm sorry, but could you show me again where that, what area that includes?
This is the hatched area is the property in question.
So it does not, does it hit Carmel? Or is that a strip of land that's not?
Well, there's a ditch that separates.
Oh, the ditch, okay, I, I got that. Yeah, I'm, I'm opposed to that, again, because I think it'd be too much, you know, traffic on, I don't understand why it couldn't be, you know, residential, honestly, is, is what I would like. I have a larger question. Is, is this property, is the whole property owned by one person, one entity? Is that the Rochelle Foundation?
The applicant is ERF Real Estate, as stated on the...
Are they representing an owner or are they the owner?
They are the owner.
Oh, they are the owner? Is that the Roche...
That's why they're listed as the owner.
Is that the Rochelle Foundation?
ERF Real Estate is the owner.
That's all we know. I, I had heard that it was the Rochelle Foundation and it's kind of a larger question, but it does pertain to this if that happens to be the case, because I've also heard that and been pointed out to a lot, significant parts, number of parts of land in the city that people tell me, you know, yeah, that's the Rochelle Foundation and yeah, that's the Rochelle Foundation. And, you know, my, my question really is, I, I looked up their mission statement at some point and it's very altruistic and vague, but it's basically for the betterment of the community. And I was just sort of wondering about this, use of this land, if indeed it is owned by Rochelle. And I don't know that it is or isn't, you can't tell by the name of, of that entity. But is, is that really consistent with their mission statement? And that may not be your business.
Yeah, I think, you know, kind of the purview of the, the planning commission is we don't have jurisdiction on, on anything that, that...
It, would it not be any, your business as, I mean, if, if they are buying up tracts of land and this one in particular, i- is it not your all's business whether it's compatible with their mission statement?
As far as the planning commission, no, not in terms of what their mission statement is. For us, we're looking at, is the use of the land compatible with future land use, consistent with other areas, area development plans? But we don't, we don't look at the owner, owner level in terms of, you know, is it consistent with their mission or, or not? Because for us, as zoning on behalf of the city of Corpus Christi, we're trying to balance the needs of, of all the citizens of Corpus Christi and, and be consistent with the...
I know, that's why I wonder why it might not be a concern of yours. But you say it's not in, in your line of business to be concerned about that.
All right. Thank, thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone wishing?
Sir.
My name is Jerry Susser at two twenty-five Wilshire Place in Corpus Christi here. And we have a partnership with Vicaro Ventures to develop this site we have under contract. And we feel that with the drainage ditch on the Carmel Park side and this backside is really lining up with the first street of homes off, on the other side of Everhart, we feel that the proper land use for, for our purposes is to do a, the commercial as we have in Lot one, Block one. Without that, I think that the only use for that would be, he's talked about is low-income, affordable housing or something in, in that nature, which really doesn't go well with the commercial development that we plan to do. It just makes a lot of sense to me that, that what we're showing here should have the same designation as Lot one, Block one. And I appreciate y'all's service and your time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Susser. Anyone else wishing to speak on item thirteen? That being said, we'll close the public hearing. I guess we have a request from the applicant.
Yes, and just to clarify, the RM one district isn't inherently mean low income. It can be any range of economics when it comes to multifamily developments. That's not to say there's anything wrong with low income, but I just wanted to make sure it was clear that there is not one district that's pigeonholed based on, on economic need. But nevertheless, yes, the applicant has requested to table the item because of travel issues that we know are now happening across the state.
Did the applicant give a, a date?
More than likely the next planning commission, which will be in...
The ninth?
The ninth.
I'll make a motion that we table this item for the March ninth planning commission.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Do we have a director's report tonight? Are there any future agenda items we want to add for the next meeting? All right, can I get a motion adjourned? So moved.